Morning, everybody.
Morning.
Craven County Board of Commissioners' regular session is in remote session for Tuesday, January 21st. If you please, please put your phones on silent. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Here.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Here.
Chairman Martin.
Here. Do we stand for the pledge and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, we give you thanks for giving us another day.
Bless the members of this Board of County Commissioners. Help them to walk in the light, to share their strengths, and to build upon their common desire for the good of our county that they might better attend to the important issues of our day. May they think clearly, speak confidently, and act courageously to make our county better today than it was yesterday. If it be your will, we ask that men and women of goodwill from both sides of the political aisle might cooperate in the forming of law and policy. May we be forever grateful for the blessings our county enjoys and appropriately generous with what we have to help those among us who are in need. May all that is done this day be for your greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen. We've had a chance to look over the agenda. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda? If there are none, I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Next is the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of January 6th, 2020, tax releases and refunds, and the sheriff's budget amendment, K-9 donations. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, Greg, could you provide us a list of how much has come into this account and how much has gone out? Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next on the agenda is Stephanie Cox for Coastal Communication Action Presentation.
Good morning.
Morning. You can come up here, please. Good morning.
Thank you for having me this morning. I'm just coming to get the approval to submit grant for the fiscal year 2020, 2021. Great work that we're doing through Coastal Community Action here in Craven County is we're working with the self-sufficiency program with our families here, serving them and helping them to become a little bit more economic, you know, increasing their economic solvency with them and their families. And we provide funding for them. A lot of times, they're struggling with paying their city of New Bern bills, border bills, and then with their, um, do Progress Energy bills as well, as well as finding employment. They struggle with that. They struggle with taking care of their education for themselves, and so that is the work that we do. We bring them on the program, and we help them to establish measurable goals, and we work with them for the duration of up to five years to be able to assist them. And the financial assistance, again, is tied to their goals.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And discussion. Commissioner Liner.
Ma'am, I just got one question. I mean, I know we're probably gonna approve this, but I would, I would suggest maybe you go back and take a look at the application.
Okay.
Because the paperwork, projected expenses, the numbers, that what's on that page, which is page six.
Okay.
Throughout your application doesn't necessarily add up, because you're saying in one place $125,000 for client privileges.
Mm-hmm.
And then your grant, you're saying you're applying for $130,000 for client services.
Okay.
And then you're saying you're gonna expect it to serve 125.
Yes, sir.
People, and then a portion of it back to your state, you're gonna expect to serve 150.
Okay.
So the numbers don't seem to be jive.
Okay.
It's all right.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other comments or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it. Thank you. Jeff Wood, Department of Economics, Economic Development.
Good morning, Chris.
Good morning, Jeff.
Just forgive me for this. Still call a hashtag pound sun, so I'll work this about the best I can. I want to talk to you a little bit about our, our properties in the industrial park, specifically what's called Lot 19, and some of the things that have happened there, and some of the investments that we're looking at making here in calendar year 2020. So just as a reminder, Lot 19 is about a 65-acre piece of property. When you go into the south side of the industrial park, south of US 70, you'll see the Lawrence Bosch building, and you'll see some of the new developments, including the Shell building on your left. All the green space after that is, is most of what's called Lot 19. There is a small strip right through here, but for most of it, it's right through here. And you'll see later on some pictures, but I wanted to show you an older picture for presentation purposes. That is the 13.1 acres that you had sold to the C-1A that's been broken up into Project Cove and then Project Tiger. So one of the things, too, that really helped out, and I wanted to give kudos to my predecessor and to the development team, Craven team, prior to beginning here, was the Duke Site Radiance Program. This went through that program, I think around 2017. It's been immense help. When a company comes in, they have the ability to look at all the environmental issues that might come into play, as far as wetlands, all the infrastructure that's nearby, to be able to give them that quick and easy information has been absolutely necessary, and it's probably why this project, this lot, has been a little bit of a high bet of activity over the last year, was starting with that piece. So I wanted to, I could point that out as well. So some of the investments that the county has made over the past few years, you'll see back on the map here, this is executive, this is now manufacturers. And so that was about a $720,000 investment, of which over $500,000 of that came through grants. Predominantly the state provided that funding with a match from the county prior to, that really was able to open up the, the property. Also included dark fiber that goes along Manufacturers' Drive. And then also, there was recently a water and sewer extension, which the, the county invested $100,000. We got a $25,000 grant in addition to that from Duke to the water and sewer near the Shell Building. Actually, it goes to the end of what would have been that lot before it's partitioned off. Due to those investments, you've got a number of things that have happened. The property that was sold to the Craven 100 Alliance, 13.1 acres, was divided into two different projects. Project Cove was a project that will be about a $2.5 million investment and create about 10 jobs. Project Tiger, which the county also sold an additional acre to last year, thank you again for that, was looking at a million-dollar investment and about 25 jobs. And so we also have received another grant from Duke, so a total of $50,000 investment from them. And then when you look at the number of investment dollars total that's came outside of, of the county's investment, it's about $540,000 in matching grants. So just to recap, the county put in about $300,000 in investment over the past several years. That brought in another $450,000 to the county through grants, and brought in a $3.5 million investment on the private side. So to be able to finish off this lot, again, this will show you the two properties that were sold recently. This is just a concept. This is a concept based off of low-density permitting and what has been popular in the park. So in addition to this 10,000-square-foot building and that 20,000-square-foot building, you also have a concrete pile that has remodeled their building, which is approximately the same size. You've got Chem Act that's built their building recently across the street that's a similar size. So following along with those series of successes, we would need the infrastructure of which ends here, water and sewer, to go up through Manufacturers' Drive. So we have been exploring within the office a grant, again, Infrastructure Development Fund Grant from the state. You can see the estimated cost would be $470,000. We've got a grant application, if the county so approves, of $352,000, of which we have the $25,000 from Duke that would be able to go towards that match. I have some approved money within my budget right now for that development that we can put towards the effort, but we still have a shortage of about $50,000 that would be needed from the reserve fund, I believe would be the correct place to pull that. And that would allow us to open up the remaining property, which is about 60 acres worth of property. You know, that's a major investment for ours. I do believe that, in summary, that you're looking at a continued success of what you've already done. I think that being able to finish off that infrastructure all the way through in one fell swoop will help us to move quicker. I think it's a situation now where we would even have, because of the success of the Shell Building, being able to be sold so quickly, I think that we have an opportunity to market the property, not just to the end user, but for developers in the future, so that we can have multiple pieces of property. And I'll tell you why that's important. When we started constructing the Shell Building, I listed it on an industrial real estate called CoStar LoopNet. Its analysis showed that there was 20,000 square foot of industrial property being built within metropolitan New Bern, our 20,000-square-foot building. And so that demand is there. It's needed. It's why it was sold so quick. It's why there were multiple people that were looking at it at the same time. So this infrastructure would be able to open us up to multiple opportunities in the future, and then, of course, the return on investment for the county, whether it be for economic development purposes or for selling the property itself. So with your packet, there was a resolution authorization of the office to go forward to apply for this funding, and then also requesting the additional $50,000. And if that, I'm just proud of myself for being able to use this for that long. Is there any questions?
Okay. Let's get a motion first. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Now, discussion. Now, how many of these companies are moving in to the 60 that you have in your pocket?
Right now, the...
I'm only kidding. Go ahead.
Let's keep our fingers crossed.
Commissioner Liner.
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner.
If Jack Wheel just brings up how much we got in that fund.
Yes, sir. So when he said the reserve fund, it's more specifically the Economic Development Reserve Fund, which is different than your fund balance, which we would traditionally use. In 2014, the state did away with the regional economic development systems, and we had money at the Eastern Region, who at the time we remember of, I believe it was about $1.2 million.
Right.
We've used some of those funds for different projects. Jeff probably has a list, but I think we're roughly around $600,000 left. I would recommend you take this $50,000 from that reserve account. I think it's a great use of it, because when we got it back, it was stipulated to anything related to economic development, but more particularly infrastructure, which clearly this is.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, we have a motion, a second. And a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Booker.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Thank you, Jeff. Kelly Walker, COTS.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The current COTS public comment process for fair increases and major service reductions policy was written in 2010. At the time the policy was written, it did not require governing board approval. Based on feedback from the Federal Transit Administration, triennial review, and discussions with North Carolina Department of Transportation, it is best practice to obtain the governing board's approval before discussions and development of service improvements begin. Therefore, we are requesting board approval of this policy, shown as attachment number four, so it would be in place for discussions and service improvements. The policy remains consistent with the 2010 version, which was included and accepted as part of the triennial review in August 2019 and the NC DOT. This will be the guiding document when determining what changes to service would require public input and public comment opportunities in the form of a public hearing should changes be considered at any time in the future.
Okay. I have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Any discussion? And no discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nays? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Department of Sheriff, School Resource Officers, SRO. And Mr. County Manager.
Morning.
Sheriff Chip Hughes here with me, so please don't hesitate on questions as we go through this for either of us. A couple weeks ago, Dr. Doyle, our superintendent for Craven County Schools, made the sheriff and I aware that they had been successful in a recent grant they'd applied for to the state for additional SRO officers here in our county. As the board's aware, previous to the grant, there are 12 elementary schools that still do not have SROs. Last year, we were able to receive four additional SROs for elementary schools through a new state program, which is a little bit higher reimbursement at $50,000 than the traditional ones we've always had at $38,000 for our high schools and our middle schools. So this year, there were, she applied for all 12. She was granted three. At this time, we were not quite ready to bring this forward. We're still working out some of the cost and where the officers will go. At this point in time, we do understand that Dr. Doyle will be recommending these three schools for SROs. Vanceboro Farm Life, in discussions with the town that the sheriff and I've had, it appears the town would be willing to take on this officer. We have discussed with the mayor, as late as last week, some of the challenges that we face, you know, not knowing that this is a permanent funding source, but may be temporary. They're still interested, however, they're not gonna be able to take it up, I believe, until tomorrow. So another reason for us to kind of wait to see what, what happens there. The other two schools coming from, on the recommendations are Brinson Elementary, which is in the James City Community, Commissioner Booker in your district on Old Cherry Point Road, and Arthur Edwards Elementary School, Commissioner Liner, behind, in the, I guess the west side of Havelock. So at this point, it appears if Vanceboro takes the SR officer, we would be looking at two positions here for the sheriff's office, one for Brinson, one for Arthur Edwards. The grant would, of course, pay us $50,000. We know that's not the total cost of setting up an officer. It's more like 100, when you get the car, the gun, the radio, the phone, the uniforms, the vest, all those different things. What we're asking you today, because there is a significant challenge right now, which the sheriff can elaborate on with receiving vehicles for law enforcement, there's just not a quantity on the market at the moment. We do have a lead time. Knowing that these officers would potentially be becoming, coming before you at your next meeting, we wanted to see if you'd be okay with giving the sheriff and staff the, the go-ahead on going ahead and placing a purchase order for the two vehicles now, to shorten that lead time, knowing that, you know, you may or may not approve these officers. We're not asking that today, but knowing he's got a significant challenge there. We have checked with the vendor, even if we put the purchase order in, go ahead and get in line. If we need to back out, that's acceptable with the dealership. So sheriff, I'm gonna turn it over to you and let you go to the floor.
Just like County Manager said, the biggest challenge right now is really not the placement of personnel, because I have qualified applicants that have extreme interest in, in being SROs, so we're good there. We've got a lot of good, qualified applicants that we can place immediately. The problem is, I don't have vehicles to put them in, and Captain Lee can comment on the, the lag time on vehicles. Right now, they're not even taking order on Chargers. At one time back in December, if we were able to place an order, it would be the fall of this year before we could take delivery. The Chargers has traditionally been the sedan that, that we utilize in this county for our patrol vehicles. So that leaves us with our, our next best option, or in my opinion, is a better option, which is a Durango. It's an all-wheel-drive SUV, mid-sized Durango. The lead times on those, Captain, or...
We can have one. There will be one here, possibly before the end of this month, and at the very latest, 90 days, 90 to 120 days, but possibly sooner for those Durangos.
And what we're gonna look at, as Dodge is telling us, and the dealerships are telling us, because of the situation with the Chargers, obviously, the demand for Durango has gone way, way up. So that's the biggest challenge we're gonna have, putting these people in place with the, the equipment they need. That's why we're making this request.
Okay. Mr. County Manager, on here it says for information purposes. Are you looking for a motion today?
No, sir. I'm not. I'm just looking for a head nod, if you're okay with the purchase order, you know, moving forward with staff, knowing that you can backpedal on it when you make your decision on the third. As you heard from Captain Lee, I mean, I thought 60 days and maybe 90. So any, any amount of time we get as a jump start is beneficial to us.
Commissioner Liner.
Sheriff, what's, what's the price difference between the Durango and the Charger?
The Durangos are $31,600, the Chargers in the neighborhood of $23,000 to $24,000. That's base price, not upfitted, no additional equipment added to it. That, that's what we pay before it comes to us. The upfitting is an additional cost.
But the upfitting is gonna be the same for both? Doesn't make no difference?
Not necessarily, because the Durango, we can place a vault, which is a lock, steel, metal box, in the cargo area of those vehicles, so the officer can actually lock away weapons or equipment, so that adds an additional cost to it. But generally, they're in about the same neighborhood, but there's a little difference with the consoles, because the Durango has a different type of console than the Chargers do. So there's, there's maybe a little additional cost to some of the equipment for the Durangos.
So in reality, you're looking at about a $9,000 upgrade between the Charger and the Durango, first, on $18,000 hit.
Yeah, the upfitting for the Durangos in the neighborhood, close, a little bit less than $12,000, where it may be a little cheaper for Charger, but we don't have the ability to buy Chargers right now, because they're not in production. And so there is a slight uptick, according to the dealer, on people wanting to purchase the Durangos now, because they're available. So you kind of really have to get in line. So what we really wanna do is just reserve some vehicles that, that are coming in that are already on order from the dealer, that will be on the ground, and they, they kind of move us up, so we can go ahead and get those vehicles right away if we need them. And we will need them.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Would you necessarily give these two new vehicles, two that we're talking about?
Yes, sir.
To the SROs, or would they go to other officers and then give existing vehicles to the SROs?
They would be put on the road, and existing vehicles would go to...
Some of the ones with higher mileage.
Yes, sir.
Would go to the SROs, because they're not really driving them.
Correct.
Daily.
I would opt to put the two-wheel-drive vehicles at the schools.
Yeah, okay.
And the all-wheel-drive vehicles on the road.
Thank you.
All right, we're looking for a consensus. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
If I may ask, just not about the vehicles, Sheriff, do you know the criteria that superintendent used in choosing these three schools?
Yes, sir. And Captain can elaborate a little bit, because he oversees our SRO division. It was my understanding in talking with her that it was based on call volume. Brinson is, we do get a lot of call volume at Brinson, Farm Life a substantial amount, but of course, we've got Vanceboro PD that helps with that, and then Arthur Edwards there in Havelock. We also get a lot of calls at Bridgestone Elementary, too, which is one that I would encourage y'all to think about for the future, because it is in the county, and even though we have Bridgestone Police Department, when they respond out there, that is a mutual aid request that we make, because we might not have someone in the immediate area. But that school, just like many of our other elementary schools in the county, are very vulnerable.
One more question, if I may, Mr. Chairman. Are you aware of any other monies that, well, we don't have a budget, but if a budget was ever passed, are there any other monies that are supposed to come down for school resource officers, other than these grants here?
No, sir, not that I know of. Now, if, if a budget is, is passed, then, you know, there are some monies in there that are earmarked for the office that we would intend to put toward vehicles and vapor radios, so that, that might be an option, but it's April before they even go back in session, and it really depends on who you talk to.
So in reality, if this Board of Commissioners wanted to do anything in addition to these schools that have been chosen here, we would, it would be a completely 100% of Sunday County.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to piggyback on that. I was gonna wait till the end, but you brought up a good point. The sheriff and his staff is doing a great job on visiting. I commend you on the visiting. But we talked about this last year. We didn't react to it on this past budget. I'd like to have this on the workshop for the nine remaining schools, that we talk about what we're gonna do.
That's right.
For the SROs, and get them added in here. I'm, I'm not a scare-all and everything else, but I'm concerned that we've got nine soft sites, that we're in a world situation now, that's gonna put us critical in need, and I don't wanna be on this board when we have something happen. I commend the sheriff for everything he's doing out there, the visitation and everything that's going on, but this board needs to stand up on the SROs if we're serious in putting out there. Now, I know the superintendent put in for 12. I talked to John Bell. He didn't think there was gonna be an issue with getting probably five of them. I was surprised when we got three. So we need to move forward, because like you said, there's no budget. They haven't even got their money for their hardening program to start on what they ask out there for the schools and everything else. So if it's all right with this board, I'd like to make that as an agenda for the workshop.
Well, I think, the County Manager and I had spoken about this, and we were planning on putting it on here.
Okay.
Okay, we have a consensus, then, I believe.
So let me just, let me just caveat here, so I can hear that consensus. I just was making eye contact with Craig. So what we'll do, if you give me the consensus today, we'll come back with the budget amendment, which should actually allocate the money for the vehicles and the personnel at your next meeting, but this will allow us at least to put a purchase order. So if you're okay with that, we'll move forward.
Any objection?
Yes.
Okay, you got it.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Amber Parker, Department of Matters, Human Resources.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here this morning to request an amendment to the Craven County Personnel Resolution, Article 8, Leave of Absence, Section 19, sick leave, the transfer from other agencies and entities. Members of the local government employees retirement system and the teachers and state employees retirement system and other reciprocal retirement systems may use their unleased sick leave balance at the time that they retire to increase their service length, and that makes these sick leave balances very valuable to our employees. And because of this, state agencies and many local governments, they allow employees to transfer in their sick leave balances when they become hired. And in the past, Craven County has not allowed new employees to do that, because they, they have not allotted in the past, and so they wanted to keep continuing to not allow employees to transfer in their sick leave, and what this has done is created a great recruitment hindrance for Craven County, especially when we're trying to recruit employees that have longer service lengths, that have that experience that we need, such as department heads, assistant department heads, because we're not allowing them to bring in those sick leave balances when they are very valuable to the employees and other employers are allowing them to transfer them in. So over the years, we continue to not allow that transfer of sick leave, because it isn't fair to the current employees who did not have that chance when they were hired. So to reduce those recruitment challenges, I'm requesting to amend the personnel policy to allow for new hires to transfer in their sick leave balance to Craven County. And then in an attempt to make this policy change fair to the current employees, for a period of six months from the date that this policy is amended, Human Resources will accept official verification from current employees, immediate past employer, who is a member of the North Carolina State Retirement System documenting sick leave balances, and eligible sick leave will be accepted. So the policy language that we currently have in our personnel policy states that Craven County does not accept transfers sick leave from other agencies or entities. And the proposed language, what I would like to put into the policy, would state, and this is fairly standard amongst personnel policies of other county governments, employees hired by the county whose immediate past employer within the last ninety days with the state of North Carolina, any of its political subdivisions, any local government entity or authority or municipality in North Carolina, may transfer to the county any unused sick leave, provided the employee has not requested or is receiving retirement benefits from the North Carolina State Retirement System. The employee must request a transfer within ninety days of the beginning of employment with Craven County, and it is the employee of the responsibility to provide bona fide documentation of the amount of unused sick leave from the immediate past employer. Upon verification of the unused sick leave by Human Resources, the employee will be credited with their transferred sick leave. Transferred sick leave can be used in the same manner as sick leave earned in the scope and course of employment with Craven County.
Okay, before I ask for a motion, now, I understand there's no cost here.
Right, there is no cost. They would transfer over their sick leave balance. Employees' salaries are budgeted for a same amount every year, and so they wouldn't use any more hours than what they normally would have. So there's no overall cost. The main, the main cost that you could potentially have is if you have a new employee and maybe they don't have any sick leave balance, and they transfer their balance in, and they've been here safe for a year, and they then qualify for FMLA and need twelve weeks of leave, they could have it paid instead of unpaid, but it still wouldn't be any more than what their budget annual salary would be.
Do I have a motion?
Some of them.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Number six, appointments, pending, current, incoming. Pending appointments, Adult Care Home Advisory Committee and Nursing Home Advisory Committee. I'm going to stop here for a moment. Commissioner Mitchell, myself, and the County Manager had a meeting with the Director of the COG and her assistant. They have made some concessions to allow us to appoint people to this committee on a provisional basis. They've also offered to advertise, to help us out in getting people. We have one, the Adult Care Nursing Home Advisory Committee. We have five vacancies. That includes the one that's being appointed here today. So I would ask the Commissioners to please make efforts to go out and get more people for this adult advisory committee and the nursing home committee. Commissioner Mitchell, would you want to make a comment?
No, sir. I think you captured it.
Thank you. Current appointments, Adult Care Home Advisory Committee, Ann York wishes to be appointed. I know Ann York. I would reappoint her. Havelock Library Board, William Sherman wishes to be reappointed.
Darren, you want to reappoint him, or you want me to?
Yeah, I reappoint him.
Okay. Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Jacqueline Demarest is no longer able to serve. Do we have any applications?
No, and Jennifer's aware of this. It's a mental health position, so she's going to do some footwork on that.
Okay. Upcoming appointments, Craven Agent Planning Board, Nursing Home Advisory Committee, and Craven Health Board. County Attorneys Report.
Mr. Chairman, I have no report today.
And you got here early, too.
I'm sorry to disappoint.
It's a disappointment.
County Managers Report.
Yes, sir, I can, I've got one thing, substitute from here. Just a reminder to the Board, immediately following this meeting, we'll be heading to the Pulse Center for a tour with Community College President Ray Statts, to look at the work they're doing with workforce development. Thank you.
Approximately, how long will that take?
Commissioner Booker.
Yes, I have one thing, Mr. Chairman. Anybody that's been watching the news, observed what's been going on in Virginia, and a number of people in our county, excuse me, a lot of people in our county are very concerned about that. I've had a number of people approach me, asking, what are we doing? A number of counties, approximately twenty-five, have already moved or in the process of moving to pass some type of resolution to make sure that the Second Amendment rights are not infringed upon. We're fortunate in this county that we have a sheriff who is a strong Second Amendment rights proponent, and that's not the case in every county. So we are fortunate in that case. So what I'd like to make the Commissioners aware of today is that on our, at our next meeting, which will be, I think, the third of February, I got that date right? There will be a, someone coming to present to us a resolution, and it's titled, "The Craven County Second Amendment Constitutional Rights Protection Resolution." Someone will be coming to request that we approve that resolution. I've given each of you a copy of it today, so you have plenty of time to review it. And I encourage us to take action and pass that resolution at our next meeting. That's all I have.
Okay. Commissioner Mitchell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of items. Number one, ACT, Allied for Cherry Point, Allies for Cherry Point, is beginning to hold very preliminary meetings to look at ways and means to engage the public into ways to promote and grow our military facilities at Cherry Point. The Fleet Readiness Center is the largest industrial complex in North Carolina, but local awareness outside of Havelock area is not as robust as we would like it to be. So ACT is beginning to look at that in terms of measures to increase that. The other thing that I'd like to bring up is I was privileged to attend the North Carolina Department of Transportation's Second Annual Transportation Symposium, that I would highly recommend. It was looking at the transportation revolution that is coming in, coming down through the future. We all hear a lot about autonomous vehicles, and we all think we're going to have self-driving trucks and cars on the road. That is a long way away. However, they are beginning to use autonomous vehicles in mines, ports, and other places where they have a designated, I'm going to call it a loop, where you're going, where the vehicles are going round and round and round, doing a specific targeted task, if you will, that does not promote or does not provide any risk or safety concerns. The bigger issue is electric vehicles. Battery technology is increasing now by leaps and bounds, and that is probably going to be a much bigger influence on transportation in the future. The biggest point that came out in the Transportation Symposium, however, is we think of these changes as happening over decades, and it's likely to be much shorter rather than much longer, just like our transportation from a horse-drawn economy to an automobile economy happened, actually, in about a decade and a half, much faster than we remember it now. And so electric vehicles are in the future. We just need to be aware of that in terms of future transportation needs. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Commissioner Liner?
Thank you, sir. Getting back on Mr. Booker's request for the resolutions, I'm fully in support of it. And I'd like to have, if possible, Sheriff's agreement, that that meeting come forward and be in the favor endorsing the resolution, because I think everybody is aware, if we don't have the sheriff's support, he stands up, he's the one that's going to have to enforce this. And if it does get passed, it's just a resolution. So I'm a little bit ignorant on this area. If the state passes it and to get rid of it, and we pass it to keep it, and the feds, we're still going to follow the state, or are we following the feds?
Mr. Chairman, it really, or Mr. Liner, it really depends on the exact issue we're talking about. As we all know, generally, federal law is going to grant state and local law, and state law is going to grant local law, but there are some significant exceptions to that general rule. So we'll need to take a place, look at the resolution, and exactly what it's asking to do, and if there's one from there. I just do not see the text of the resolution yet, but County Managers want to share that with me.
Okay. I'm fully in support of it. I carry, will continue to carry, and they better be prepared to come forward on it. So, but we need the backing of the sheriff to come forward. Just to kind of give you an idea of what my thoughts are, as the constitution electing sheriff, I am extremely supportive of the Second Amendment. And it is my job as the sheriff, and I took a note, to protect our constitution and our people from unlawful procedure, especially those that are lawfully in possession of weapons. And I can tell you, I will not use county resources to illegally seize weapons from our citizens. So I certainly will be supporting this, and I will be glad Amber's going to actually ask to come forward, y'all, and show my support for it. Just to kind of give you an idea of where my thoughts are.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Sheriff.
That's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner McCabe.
Sorry, I haven't been this morning.
Commissioner Sampson.
Yes, I'd like to say I was at the Martin Luther King recognition banquet, just passed my name. It went along real well. I thank the people in our area, and willing to work together, get things done for every citizen of our kind. And I would like to see today that we all could come together, and we could save a lot of money if we could recognize each other as equals, because we were born as equals, and we sure going to die as equals. But I would like people to be able to get along with one another, and look out for one another, and protect each other. And this is what I read in our Constitution amendments, that how we are supposed to act toward one another, how we are supposed to work with one another, how we are supposed to look out for one another. And the part that I have, that I would like to play in this, that we start out, especially when a child is just born, that we begin to take this child under consideration and see that he is well taken care of from birth on up, rather than wait until he gets maybe ten or fifteen, and put him in prison and keep him in there, day in and day out, trying to change him. It's hard to change a person, and then they've been gone one way so long. I think we can make a change, a better change, if we start out from birth, and if the child has any malfunction in its system, that we will try to treat that before it's too late. I can see us spending millions and millions of dollars trying to correct the prison system we already have, because they're over and over, we do the prison system to put prison, people in prison, sometimes we keep them all, keep them ten years, sometimes fifteen, sometimes keep them all life. Now, we taking care of them, not only are we taking care of them, if they have a family, kids, a wife, we going to take care of them also. And I can see a way that we could save taxpayers money. I hear people grumbling about taxpayers money. We could sell a table, a lot of taxpayers money, and we could correct the element before it happens. This is just like when you're thinking about special adult, and you think about going in a party, and beginning to drink, having drinks, and beginning to get the system all worked up, and beginning to start raising sand, and beginning to fight each other. I've seen friends, and even brothers, kill one another because of the drug or the dope that's in the system. And I know what children, if they grow up under these circumstances, it's, some of them have people that's going to take care of them, a lot of them have people that won't even take care of them. Let's put them out there in the open and go for themselves. And so it's up to us to correct this after they get out there, then we going to have to pay the expenses, just try to see, try to change them, or lock them away, but lock them away, we taking care of them. So I'd just like to see, I'd just like if our citizens, our citizens, to think about this. Now, I know it's not like it was when I was coming up, because when I was coming up, it was tough, but we had parents. If we didn't have our mothers and fathers, we had our mother, mother and grandmother, they would stick with us, and see that we were brought up in an orderly manner. But now, it seems like we only have law enforcement to take care of our children. Now, a lot of times, we, we got a lot of good parents, and we got a lot of bad ones. I'm not talking about the good ones, because they feel in between. And the kids run the street and make it, make a habit happen on, on the citizens of the community, because they're, they're breaking in, they're beating up people, trying to rob them. And when we go get them, then we got to take the circumstances they're in, and try to correct the circumstances. It's hard to do. It's going to cost a lot of money to renew a child after they get on the wrong side of the law. So I, I've been working, and I would like for the other citizens that began working, and see can't we do something about this crime that is in our neighborhoods? We don't have all that much in, I would say, in New Haven, but we have some, and we could kind of try to stop that. But it needs to happen all over, but I'm really concerned about Craven County right now. If you can be a example, a good example, other people going to want to follow. And they're beginning to see us saving millions of dollars a year, then other people are trying to do the same thing. And I see even since we had this reentry program, I can see this reentry program is growing strong, and I can see people beginning to change their habits. People beginning to go to, go to school and be, try to be prepared to get a job, to take care of family. And I know if, if people follow this example, they'll follow other examples. So I'm just wishing that day would come, that these things happen. Now, getting back to Dr. King, we had good support yesterday. I guess, I'm just hoping it's not just for one day. I'm hoping that we begin to work toward making things better, not only one day a year, but every day, that we can rest in our homes, and we can walk our streets without fear. And it's fear of walking the streets now, a lot of people don't, especially elder people don't even want to walk the street nights. I don't do a whole lot of walking myself, and that's like people carrying weapons now. A lot of people carry weapons because they're afraid that somebody, someone will attack them in the streets, and if they think you got a little money, they'll definitely take that. So I'm just hoping that we can start anyway, make a start, and try to think about these things before they happen, and prepare for them, that we can make things better. It's not going to happen overnight. I hear people always saying it won't happen overnight. I know it's going to take a while to accomplish the six great tasks I'm talking about, but it can be done. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Sampson. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Since our last meeting, the Chairman and myself were invited to go and meet with Representative Kidwell, and Sheriff Hughes was also there, and Mayor Chad Braxton from Vansford. And one of the conversations that, you know, Representative Kidwell had, is he's on the Safety Committee, a special committee that's been formed in the North Carolina House Representatives to look at our schools, and to identify problems and look at ideas to help with the safety issues. And that was his only reason for coming to Craven County. He wanted to visit these schools and to get to know our principals and our teachers. But he also was looking to see, you know, and the sheriff did a great job in outlining some things that he thought that could be done better at our schools. And I appreciate him coming. I think he is engaged in wanting to help. I am... I am hopeful that as time goes on and in the near future, more funding will come to assist in safety measures at our schools. And so he is committed, I think, in the conversation that he had with us in doing that. Also, the last thing I would just state about our meeting there that day is Representative Kidwell represents the area in which our chairman and myself represent, and he put right much money in this state budget to assist our communities, monies that we have not seen in many, many years, that would have helped rule Craven County, and upwards of almost a half a million dollars. And, you know, it's a shame, I, I understand there's a lot of opinions on both sides of the aisle why our budget was not passed, but it is a shame for our citizens that could reap such great benefits from this budget if it could have found a compromise and been passed. I hope it will be sooner than later, but I do just want to publicly thank him for the stand he took in, in representing our district. And so that's all we've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'd just like to announce that February 1st, the Clean Sweep Committee will be having their first sweep of 2020. They're meeting Saturday, February 9th, 9:00 a.m. at the parking lot here at the Administration Building. These people do a lot of good in cleaning up the areas throughout the county, and I hope everybody would give their support. Pat Sager is responsible for this committee, and she does a heck of a job getting people out. So I would ask that as many people as possible could help them out. Thursday, I attended a school board meeting. Last Thursday was a short meeting. Most of it was on the Board of Education's Vision Mission and also their Statement Mission. In addition to that, they recognized a number of teachers for exceptional achievements that they had done and some children, and then they went into a closed session. I also, last night, attended a tri-community fire department meeting, which I was very pleased to be at, as they are doing a good job in recruiting additional people to that department that can handle 140-pound water coming out of a hose. So that was good news. With that, I think we should go into closed session. The board will be requested to go into closed session, pursuit to end CGS 143318-11.
Mr. Chairman, we also have, need to be in closed session under Section 6 for a personnel matter. The motion could also reflect that.
Need a motion?
Some moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, the ayes have it. Let's go into closed session.